It is September 2nd and it is 7:00 PM. This is the Auburn Planning Board. And I am now calling the meeting to order. Is there anybody in the audience recording this? It is being recorded for transmission, or retransmission. It's being transmitted at this time. I'd like everybody to stand and please salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which sustains one nation, God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And we have ANR, that's that 282 Southbridge Street. And what they're doing is they're subdividing that lot that the Pampas used to own, this one here. It meets all the requirements?
It does.
Right now, the state of Mass is renting part of it at the store, dirt and stuff.
Oh, with the dirt and the pipes up.
Yeah, they're using it on 290.
That goes all the way down to Pike's Place.
Yeah, it does. I was amazed today. It goes from that dog place all the way down to the old rendering works. And they're cutting it into what, three lots?
That's all filled.
They're cutting it into two.
Two lots?
They're cutting off Lot 1 and then the remainder.
Okay.
Good from that capital roadway down to Lot 1. That's filled from top to bottom.
Yep, it's been filled. They've been filling it for five years or more.
With everything.
Yep.
And still has a significant grade drop at the backside to the roaming cars.
And these wires are quite long.
Well, it used to go from the street almost, straight down, where the rendering works was down here. Remember that? You used to watch them bring the cows through it.
So, what is the...
They meet all of the...
What's the frontage there? Their business lot, right?
Yeah. It's 50 and 5,000 because it's highway business. And their lot is an acre and a half and has 300 feet of frontage. It would pass muster and all, except for one zoning district we have.
Yep. I don't need problems here. I would entertain a motion.
So that...
I'll make a motion that we approve the ANR.
I'll second it.
It's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It is passed. Today's date is August 2nd, so it's 8?
September 2nd.
September, that's 9. I should know that. No, let's put it down in the date place. That's even better.
How many do you want, Adam?
Just the three papers he has.
I've got two there that's $1,000.
There's only two there? No, there's three there.
There's three. I just got home.
No, no, there's three in that stack.
Oh, okay. Are the three in there?
Yep. Yeah, the rest are ready.
And as soon as that's done, we have a hearing from Graybold Realty Trust requesting a site plan approval under Section 9.4 of the Auburn zoning bylaws for property located at 40 Southbridge Street, Auburn, Mass., Map 6, Parcel 169. All righty. All right, so we have a proposed loading dock and parking lot expansion for Graybold Realty Trust, 40 Southbridge Street, dated 5, August 2014. And it is a, right now, a dirt lot. And they're proposing a loading dock and expansion of the parking lot. And they have a bear showing us, all right? And so, site plan review, proposed loading dock and parking lot expansion, 40 Southbridge Street, Auburn, Mass., okay? Graves Engineering has been requested to review and comment on the documents. Confirmation with applicant, so Auburn zoning bylaws, Mass DPE, stormwater management policy, and standard engineering practices. GEI was authorized to proceed with this review on August 12th. And as part of this review, GEI visited the site on July 17th to observe soil testing at the anticipated stormwater management locations. So, the existing property's cartography is shown in one-foot intervals rather than two, but he's called. That's no problem. Gives him better detail. The landscape plan was not included in the plan set. We refer to the planning board whether a landscape plan prepared and codenous with Section 11 of the Auburn zoning bylaws will be included. All right, did you address that any way?
Wanted to have that discussion with the board tonight. I believe the landscaping plan is required if you have more than 40 parking spaces. We currently have 42, but one of the comments from Graves Engineering was that we should include two handicap spaces. That will reduce our parking down to 40.
40, okay. So you're right on the line. Okay.
Have you proposed any landscaping? It looks like...
It looks like there are bushes there, or those existing trees.
No, those are the existing...
They're wooded there.
Those are the existing trees and it's probably...
You can see it's heavily wooded.
Right. If you look at the aerial, as we expand the parking, we're still going to have a tree cover along the perimeter here. So at this time, the landscaping is just loam and seed to revegetate the shoulder area.
Can you point out, by standing up there exactly, arms?
All right, that's probably a good... You can see a row. This is the area that we're looking at, right in here. And even though these trees have lost their leaves, these two... Now, if we go back to the other... That one actually... Did I change that?
No, I didn't.
Okay.
We're seeing if you're paying attention.
These two trees here would be coming out with the remain... The rest of these trees would be remaining, so you would still have a growth along the property line.
Is that lot right there that's lined with parking, is that yours?
That's next door. That's not ours. That's Atlas Box.
So your property line is right through the green bush and those trees?
Right. And you can almost see this line right here, it was an existing fence.
Yep.
So that's our property line coming right up here. Then, right here, it comes over and then runs probably right above here. So there will be a row of old white pines that will come out, but there are more trees behind them.
Are you paving that, right?
Yes.
And drainage and all that?
Yes.
Okay, so I don't see any... In that particular situation, I don't see any need for any other fence. Any...
The buffer zone is filled with...
And the other side is full of the parking lot.
Yes, and it looks a little bit different from what it shows on here. It's now paved back quite a bit.
Because we put in that, yeah, that fueling station in there. Okay.
Let's redo the graves.
Now, compliance with the M-A-D-E-P, stormwater standards, is reasonable. All right, so then what's he concerned about?
We just had a different... If you look at his comment number four...
Yeah, that's what I'm looking at.
We had a difference of opinion as far as how to account for the total suspended solids removal, but he agrees that regardless of which opinion there is, it meets the total suspended solid removal requirement.
Now, are you from Graves or from the applicant?
I'm from the applicant, Site Tech Environmental, Al Trigmas. And this is Cal Broon.
I'm the trustee of Graybold.
He's the trustee.
What he... What Mr. Trigmas is saying is correct. Jeff reviewed it. He thinks he's being liberal on the interpretation of percentage of total suspended solid removal. Jeff, being generally conservative, feels that it meets the requirements, just that what, like Al said, that it's overstated in his calculations, but either way, it falls within the requirements of DEP.
Okay, so they have no issues with the compliance with generally accepted engineering practices? And that's one thing. And now, is this going to be for current use or extended use? You're going to put in a door and a loading platform?
It's going to be for...
Not the baseball place, I would imagine.
No, the baseball place is going to be moving out. Right now, Omni occupies this building.
Yep, yep.
They want to expand.
Okay.
So that's why a loading dock is going to be constructed right at this location here. And Omni is going to take over that space that the baseball place covers.
The whole thing, yeah, okay.
There's currently no loading dock. There's no access.
Right. I saw that. That's why I wondered why you want to track the trail with Paul.
The two buildings are not connected.
You know, there's like eight, I don't know, what?
It's about, right.
Eight, 10 feet in the building, maybe.
Right, they're going to put...
What about that baseball that's going to expand from the white building?
No, he's leaving. No, the baseball thing is in that building up against Polo right there.
Baseball is in here.
There's another business in front. What's it, plumbing?
Ari Michael.
Yeah. Ari Michael's in the front, the baseball thing's in the back. And evidently, you're going to take the baseball thing. That must be empty space in the building now. Is that...
No. Right now, the back of the building is occupied by Top Prospect.
Okay.
And Omni's in the building that's in white.
Right, next door.
And they're going to expand and take, keep staying in the building there and take the entire back of the other building.
The back of the other building.
Their business is growing.
Okay.
Is there any proposal to connect the two buildings? They're going to remain separate structures, separate operation? It's going to be the same company?
Right. They're going to put in some additional doors.
But you don't own the white top building?
No, we do.
Oh, you do?
It's all in the same lot.
It's all part of 40 Southbridge.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I know. I had to run around there, try to find a place.
Yeah, evidently, we grant from one of the few properties that has two buildings on the same tax or whatever.
This is the tack of Omni, right here.
Yep.
And Tom gets the benefit. This is, they're moving from New York, Upper State in New York. They had a factory, so Omni will be getting another expansion or another business.
Yeah, okay. Okay, now, so accessible, no new accessible. Oh, so you addressed the handicapped accessible places?
Yes, right now, under existing conditions. Once again, we're not touching anything up front, but there's a handicapped parking space right in front of Omni. There's another handicap parking space where this, Omni's right at Gray.
Yep.
There's another little ramp, small ramp right here with a handicap parking space. And it is kind of interesting, even though the ramp's here, there's no designated parking. So that's right here. We're just going to designate the handicap parking spaces at the closest point.
I thought that was the handicap sign there by that door.
I didn't see it.
There's no parking here, I know that. And I thought that's what it said.
I didn't see the sign this evening.
All right, okay. No problem. All right, so the handicap is taken care of. Okay, so you have to, you rely, yeah, you revise that sewer line symbol.
Right.
Okay. Okay, she clarified the chain link fence is to be removed on the southern edge of the site. The southern edge of the site is along Polo's?
Right here, along Atlas Box, which is on the bottom section. And it's in alignment with this drive aisle right here.
Okay.
And the reason for that is Atlas has approached my client that they are looking for some additional parking.
Okay.
So the thought being that while we're doing the main part of the pavement is for the maneuvering to get the...
Get the truck, yeah.
To get the truck in and out.
Yep.
So to accommodate them, and that's the truck moving, we're just going to add the parking along the perimeter.
Okay.
And that was, that's the reason for the parking. It's not needed for the building.
Yeah. Okay. That doesn't sound like a bad idea. Okay, any questions, Jim?
No, I don't have any problems with that. Maybe Adam does. What do you got, Adam?
I don't, I don't. A problem, more of a clarification. The driveway here, you're saying is to get access for Atlas to be able to park?
Right.
Are you renting those spaces? Is it a long-term, permanent sort of thing? Or is it just between the current trust and Atlas? I guess I'm wondering if it's...
There is no cross season.
And that's what I was wondering if...
If the lease goes away, that access goes away.
Okay, and that's denoted in the lease? Can you get us just a copy of that lease so we can stick it in the file? And then if you, the trust chooses to sell the building in the future and, you know, Atlas says, oh, we have this lease?
We'll see that it was only temporary.
Yeah, we...
Yeah, we don't actually, I don't actually have a lease today with Atlas, but assuming that you approve it, I'm going to negotiate that very quickly before we pay.
Sure, and I think that that can just be a condition...
We'll do that in two, three days.
Yeah, it can just be a condition to the approval. I don't need it immediately, just, it's a long-term record-keeping thing so that if Omni leaves or Omni decides we're going to start bringing more people in and we now need parking, there's some, we have some understanding of what the roles and responsibilities of everybody involved is.
Designing a 10-year lease to the, you know...
That's great.
That space, which is good for...
Yeah, no, I think it's a great project and I think it's perfect for that area. It's more of a record-keeping thing.
That's fine.
Anything else, Adam?
No, that's really the only question I had.
Will we close the hearing?
All right.
Make a motion that we close the hearing?
Second.
Okay, it's motion's been made and seconded and we close the hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion that we approve with conditions.
Okay.
One being that we get a copy of the lease.
Okay. And no others here?
And I would assume you attach standard construction hours?
Standard construction hours.
Built a plan, abide by other boards and commissions as necessary?
Yep.
I think that that's it. Construction hours?
Normal.
Standard.
Seven to...
What are we, seven to four, seven to five?
There's no houses in the house.
There's no apartments.
Hold on.
Seventh and noon on Saturday.
No Sundays.
Holidays.
Holidays.
Yeah. Standard fare.
And a copy of the lease.
Yep.
All right, so that's been made and not seconded.
Seconded.
Seconded, made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, it's been passed.
Thank you.
Nice to have you by. All done.
Thanks for the additional taxes.
Yeah, we're glad you were here.
Thank you. I believe him. Can I ask you a quick question, maybe?
Would I do the lease without?
Yep.
You want to talk off camera?
No, no.
Is there anything that you need me specifically to add to the lease?
Nope. Whatever you guys put in there, that's fine. You just send it to me. Even a scanned copy is fine.
Okay.
Just so, just so I, like I said, just so I can stick it in the file and there's no questions as we go forward.
Very good.
Great. Thank you.
That's not for this property, but that's...
No, I recognized the red bar. Thank you.
Okay, so the only other thing we have is...
Minutes.
Well, we have the...
And the new business.
And the new business.
What do you have for new business?
Postland.
Postland up there. They want to take it out of the 61A.
And, you know, since this is the first meeting that you've discussed, I don't expect you to necessarily have formulated formal comments for the board if you, as a group, want to think about it. And we can formulate the comments on the 23rd and I can have them written and submitted for the 26th, which is the date that has been requested.
Yeah, that's what we probably do. Just the green parts, not the, those are a lot of...
So I can run through this if...
Yeah, go ahead.
So this is the property owned by Sylvia C. Post Trust. I don't know if it's 164, one of those. And they have signed a purchase and sale agreement with, is it Tollway?
Not Toll Brothers.
I don't know. No, it's not Toll Brothers. I don't have the memo right in front of me. That's right here. Oh, I guess I didn't put it in there. They signed a purchase and sale for land in 61A. In order for the sale to go forward, the town has first right of refusal to purchase. We were notified on August 13th and we have 120 days with which to decide if we'd like to purchase it and then purchase it. So closing would have to happen within 121 days of notification.
What was the sale, what was the price?
2.8 plus million. There's some additional pennies after the 8 and I don't...
I'm sure the towns jumping and grabbing.
Well, ultimately, it's up to the selectmen in town meeting. What we're doing is soliciting comments from the land use board on whether there's a desire value otherwise for the town to acquire it.
Is this with the regular Curtis Street?
That's Curtis Street, yep.
Takes the turn?
That's the portion of Southhold.
We had those lots that were over here?
No, we had them down here.
This is the ones we did.
This is the ones we did.
Right. But this is where it goes down Curtis Street?
That's the portion of road.
There's one, a couple of houses here.
Yes.
And then it comes down.
Southhold Road.
And goes right into the...
The dotted line that bisects the road towards Paul? Yep, right there. That's the end of the public portion. And from that dotted line back to Ronnie, all the way to the intersection with Curtis Street, is the portion of road that Mr. Post had permitted as the road improvement plan three, four years ago? Maybe five years ago?
Wow, is that that long?
So how many acres total is it?
It's over 42.
Now, if the town owns that, is the town going to have to do all the improvements on Southhold Road?
Potentially.
You know what?
If the town wished to develop it, it would probably make sense. Or if the town wished to keep a portion of it, sell the lots. I mean, there's a variety of ownership models. It's also then a matter of what's the return and is there still an investment that the town needs to make and carry?
Now, what's the tax liability on that? Because they're taking it out of the 61...
It's a three-year payback. So previous three years of taxes, I think that the assessor is still...
That they saved.
Well, but they pay it back. There's a lump sum payment to the town for removal from 61A.
Right. The last three years that you got as a savings to yourself, because it was in 61A, you have to give back.
Correct.
I'm not sure if it's three, I just read that a while back.
The assessor's working on that figure.
When would you have that figured?
I couldn't say. I can certainly say that it would probably be by the 23rd. And once I have it, I can district it.
All right. To be honest with you guys, for the town to own that, it's going to cost the town a ton of money.
2.8 million?
No, a lot more than that, okay? Because of the road, the sewerage, the drainage, the repaving of the road, the reconfiguration of that road, because they want a portion of that to be raised, I don't know how many feet to make it, you know, straight through. And I don't know. My recommendation, of course, would be let them sell it and don't buy it.
Don't buy it.
That would be my recommendation. I wouldn't have to wait three weeks to think about it, but it's up to you guys what you want to do.
The only thing that would concern me would be, you figure, one, you've got all these houses, all right? And if you have three bedrooms, two and a half baths in there, two kids in each house, they're going to go to the school system. Each one of those kids is going to cost between $10,000 and $14,000 apiece in the school system.
I think even with that cost, Paul, okay? Even with that cost involved, the tax, the taxation on those properties, okay?
Probably five grand.
Well, that'll be more than that. But needless to say, I say that it'll come out so that if the town spent all that other money, it's still going to come out a plus for the town if they, if we don't buy it. I know what you're saying about...
How many house lots, Adam, did they say?
I believe it's 35.
35 times, how many kids are you saying? 2.2 kids?
I think that the figure for planning purposes is now 1.8 something.
1.8.
Yeah, they did that in Framingham with those 5,000 hardos along nine.
So 70 kids times 14,000 a year?
Yeah.
Well...
That's a million.
You want to think about it? As I say, that's the only, I don't think the town should be in the land business.
I don't either.
But as I say, the only thing that I'm looking at is, is the school was built for 900 kids, a high school. You wouldn't get all of them in the high school. You'd have to spread them out over the three elementary schools and the middle school.
Well, I think the other thing that, and I, you know, I don't know...
They're all going to be in different grades.
Well, yeah, and I don't know that this came up during Auburn Hills, but it's certainly a much smaller development. And 35 homes, two roads to be constructed. You have to imagine that with the market the way that it is, you're not going to have 35 homes in six months. It's going to be a three, five, 10-year project of, you know, piecing it away depending on what homes they build, what kind of market they're looking at, whether this is a project that they're going to dive into in the spring or whether it's a, all right, we're going to take our time and sort of piece it together. And so I think there's a lot of different aspects to it. And I think, like was said, you're not going to get kids, 70 kids, that are all in the same grade.
The first year.
And you may find that some of those homes don't have any children to start with.
Yeah.
Again, rather than wait till the 23rd or whatever, because I'm not going to be here on the 23rd, but I don't know. I mean, why do we need to wait?
Jeremy, you'll land use. You'll land use anyway.
I agree. I've never understood the policy or concept of not wanting kids in towns. I think families are good for towns. They increase property values, they increase activity, and it's good. I don't think the town should be in the land use business. I think if we have a developer who's interested in building in town, that's positive for everybody. I'm not sure of that.
Well, as I say, we've always run into high school between 650, 670, 680. I don't think they own over 700 kids in the high school. That's why we built it for nine.
How do you feel about that one?
I'm okay. I'd probably prefer to see him sell it.
Yeah. Everybody?
Yep.
All right, there you go. All right? Anything you want to put in on it? Nothing?
No, not really.
No.
Well, they got to, they'd have to come before us, Adam, if they...
For subdivision.
No, I don't believe they would.
It's done. It's all...
So they're buying that completed subdivision and then we already...
And they would just have to abide by the approved plans. Adam, isn't the total subdivision larger than that? No. No? The subdivision was only 13 lots and then there's this mega last lot.
Lot, yeah.
That because of road length restrictions, they weren't able to complete. So theoretically, if they decided to hold back a lot on Southhold and try and design a road that came through and popped back onto Southhold, then they would come back in front of the board. But as it stands...
It could be a second phase or something.
Yeah, as it stands, Lot 13 or 7 or...
And you've got control of it.
Whatever it is, is a, it was placed on the original plan as a farm estate lot.
Because there is a piece of properties for sale on 20 that backs up to this.
Yeah, Swedish.
Yeah, yeah.
They don't connect. They don't connect. There's a property at the end of Ryberg that actually separates them.
Oh, I bet it belongs to Ryberg. Because that's his farm stuff.
Yeah.
That's where he grows his corn and stuff.
All right, you've got your recommendation.
Works for me.
All right.
Now, we have minutes?
We don't have minutes. Do we have minutes? Yes, we did have minutes. Everybody read the minutes?
Minutes from August 12.
Any changes? Positions?
Make a recommendation. We accept the minutes from August 12?
I don't think you can.
Okay? I think somebody else should do it.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, so a motion's been made and seconded. We accept the minutes from August 12? Any objections? No? Okay, so we'll approve them unless voted on approval. All those in favor approving?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, they're approved.
I abstain.
I have Mr. Rother's signature. In both the top and the bottom, please.
Anything else to come before us?
You guys already talked about the new paint colors?
What?
Very nice. And we're trying to class the joint up.
Doesn't make it.
Benjamin Wolf.
Yeah, it looks nice.
Fenway Green.
That's what I have on base.
I'd rather have red.
There you go.
Green reminds me of my stint in the Army. The... You non-veterans wouldn't know what it's like.
Make a motion to the chairman?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
You're late.
Did you give me an email? Yes, I did. Okay.